Welcome to the Seabrook May 12th School Board Meeting. I must read this first. As Chair of the Seabrook School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I'm confirming that we are we're utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Seabrook School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through the dialing, through dialing the following phone number, 646-876-9923, and webinar ID 919-98460580, and the password is 620526. Or by clicking on the following website address, which is not available unless you go to the meeting. Alright, we previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the SU21 Office at www.su21.org. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-926-8992, extension 103, or email at r evans@su21.org. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Thank you.
Mike Rabideau?
Present, no one here.
Jessica Brown? Forrest Carter? Make sure that you unmute. Forrest Carter?
I'm here.
Jennifer Hubbard?
I'm here with family in the room.
And Kelly Huber?
I'm here with family in the room.
I have the roll call, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, hang on a second. New agenda. I'm looking at the screen and are we able to, there we go, okay, I had to refresh, I'm sorry. Okay, our roll call's completed. Are there any comments, public comments on the agenda items?
Mike, you have a, we have to do the public hearing first.
Oh. I'm sorry, public hearing and trust fund, right, sorry.
It's under the content tab on board docs.
This thing is slow. Oh yeah. Okay. School Administrative Unit 21 has legal notice for the Seabrook School District Public Hearing on Building Maintenance and Special Education Expendable Trust Funds. In accordance with RSA 198:20-C2, the Seabrook School Board will hold a public hearing Tuesday, May 12th, 2020, at 4:30 PM for the purpose of withdrawing funds from the following school district expendable trust funds. First one is Building Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund for costs related to the purchase of middle school replacement lockers and additional building maintenance and repairs. And the second one is Special Education Expendable Trust Fund, withdrawal of funds for unanticipated special education related expenses. In accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there is no physical location for this meeting. Members of the governing body have the ability to communicate during electronic meetings through the Zoom platform. Public has access to listen and participate in this meeting through the SU21 website, or by dialing phone number 1646-876-9923. And if you have any difficulty accessing this meeting, please call 603-926-8992, extension 103, or email r evans@su21.org.
So Mike, I do want to make notes that we will, we are requesting a withdrawal of $64,752 from the Building Maintenance Trust. That encompasses $55,000 for the middle school lockers, and $9,752 for repairs and maintenance related to replacement of our underground fuel tanks, as well as some electrical control work that had to be done.
Okay.
We are not requesting, we had posted for withdrawal from the Special Education Expendable Trust prior to the change from in-person to remote learning. Due to some of those savings that we've recognized, we will not be requesting withdrawal from the Special Education Expendable Trust.
Great. Okay. So, um, do I have any discussions regarding that?
So do you, I believe you need to see if anyone in the public wishes to make a comment as part of the public hearing.
Alright, are there any public comments regarding this withdrawal from the Expendable Trust Fund for the Building Maintenance Expendable Trust?
And the public can do that by submitting a question under the Q and A, or they can raise their hand if they're through the through the Zoom webinar.
Hearing none, seeing none. Any comments from the board? Now, we've discussed this prior and prior meetings regarding this, so I think it's pretty clear cut. I think it was just a matter of what amounts we're going to be withdrawn. So, I need a motion on this?
I believe, I believe those items are, Matt, do you want to, are those items are included on the agenda?
Yeah, so we would close public hearing, and then when we get to the withdrawal portion on the agenda, we would, you would make that motion at that point.
Okay, alright. Just a confirmation. Okay. The approval of meeting minutes? We're on to that. For April 14th was, which was our last regular meeting? Do I have a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion, a second to April 14th, 2020, meeting minutes. Please take the roll call.
I'll do a roll call, Mike Rabideau?
Yes.
Carter? I'm sorry, Forrest Carter?
Yeah, I think I need to abstain.
Okay, Jennifer Hubbard?
Because I don't think I was actually at the last meeting.
Okay. Jennifer?
Yes.
And Kelly?
Yes.
The motion's recorded, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, to our financial report, Matt?
Thank you. So, as I alluded to during the public hearing, we have recognized savings due to the nature of our remote learning. We have recognized expenditure savings on a number of accounts that include the bulk of which is transportation, so our regular education, transportation, field trips, athletics, our homeless and foster care transportation, as well as our transportation for students with special needs. Additionally, we're, we're saving some costs as far as heating fuels, electricity, our, some of our supplies accounts, our extracurricular stipends for the spring, and and then some, some copier postage, smaller accounts. So, as it stands, we, we anticipate ending the, the school year with approximately $180,000 in unexpended funds. We, that will be reduced by an additional $125,000 from the funding of the two expendable trusts. So $75,000 for the Building Maintenance Expendable Trust, and $50,000 for our Special Education Expendable Trust. Additionally, we have retirement stipends that will be paid out. So that's, that's gonna bring us down to, 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 close to zero. You know, when we, we add in some revenues that we, that we're anticipating to receive, you know, we will, we'll gain an additional $9,000 from this Building Maintenance Expendable Trust withdrawal that we hope to approve this evening. We have some extra Medicaid funds coming in, as well as, you know, some other miscellaneous revenues, which should bring us to probably about $30,000 that will return back to the town to offset assessment. But, as you know, this year we were in a default budget. So we were extremely, extremely lean to begin with, and then we had, you know, $330,000 in special education costs that were not budgeted for. So, I indicated in previous meetings that we, we've, we felt that we would need to withdraw from the expend, from the expendable trust, the Special Education Expendable Trust. However, due to this new environments where we did recognize those savings, we were fortunate in that regard that it just, it brought us right over the threshold, so we will not need to, to withdraw. So I'd be happy to answer any specific questions in regard to the end of, end of year.
I think we're all set, thank you very much. Okay, um, next is administrative update on COVID-19.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm, I'm gonna let people touch on a number of issues tonight. I mean, most of this work recently has been around how we finish the year, how we take care of sort of end of the year ceremonies, how we're thinking about summer programs, how we're thinking about meals during the summer months. And the issue that I've been spending most of my time on has been how we go about returning to school in the fall. So, as I said in an email to all of our boards last week, we have set up a task force and a set of working groups on this issue. We published the structure and the task force membership of all of that last week. We we are looking at producing a report on those issues by the, by the middle of June, and having some building specific pieces of that report probably by the end of June. Where those tasks or those working groups are focused on crisis response and social emotional learning, how we return to instruction, how we handle post-secondary issues for our graduates this year, and I would add to that group next year, technology and operations. And we're focused, and I'll say here because we're being really open about this, we're focused around three or four major scenarios that we believe we have to plan for. One is that we are able somehow to return to school, but we return to school under certain conditions. We return to school with social distancing in place. We return to school with a need for PPE, all of those kinds of things, and how in the world we would go about doing that. So that's one potential scenario. A second is that we're not able to return to school in September, and that we have to continue on with some form of remote learning. And exactly what have we learned from this experience of remote learning that we can apply if that were to be the scenario? And the third scenario is one that you've probably seen written about a lot, which is this idea of the potential for rolling closures. The idea that we can come back to school under some set of conditions, but that certain parts of the country experience hotspots, and closings have to happen from time to time throughout the school year. And so, we're planning for all of those. We're planning for what we might have to do, what we have to have in place, what we have to purchase, what budgets look like in, in all of those scenarios. And so that's the work of these, of these working groups and this task force over the next month or so, so that we can provide parents and teachers with answers as to what this might look like for them come September. So it's a daunting task, the state has their own task force, they're behind us, which has been true throughout this entire process, that we've had to make decisions about graduation, about summer school, all without guidance from the Department of Education in a timely fashion. And that, that will be the case here. Their report on, on return to school is not due till June 30th, and we think that's too late in order to start providing our parents and employees with, with answers. And we made a commitment, whether that's through those Saturday forums, or whether they're through board meetings, or in other means, to keep people informed almost on a weekly basis of the work that we're doing. The worst thing that I've encountered in email that, that I receive from parents and others is, is when they feel surprised. And we don't want anybody to feel surprised by, by the work that's underway. And we're trying to be really honest about how daunting these tasks are. I'll give you an example. If you start, you know, some people throw around terms like split sessions that you might have to do at a school in order to socially distance appropriately. If you start thinking about social distancing, excuse me, about split sessions in terms of what does that mean a school day or a school year looks like? What does it mean to transportation? What does it mean to all of those kinds of things? You can begin to get into some really difficult choices and some things that are budgetarily impossible very quickly. So for example, we had a conversation with a colleague in another district who took it upon themselves to figure out, how many kids could you put on a bus and social distance appropriately? The answer is that on an 80-student bus, you can put 13 students. If you think about that in terms of our transportation and what that might mean, quickly you're into doubling or tripling the amount of transportation that we might need, and that would be impossible budgetarily. So we have to think differently about that as we look through these scenarios. So it's all of that kind of work. I want to thank Mike, who's sitting on the overall task force, and Forrest, who agreed to be part of the crisis response team on, on this, on this really, really important work. So if you have questions on any of that, I'm happy to try to duck them or, or answer if I can. If not, I'll go on to Dr. Hobbs, and then to Dr. Killian, to Mr. Farrar, and then your principals. Any questions? Okay, Dr. Hobbs?
Alright, thank you. Yeah, like Dr. Lupini said, our conversations primarily have been kind of looking forward to the end of the year. What do we have to plan for, prepare for in our respective schools? For my time tonight, I'll just kind of overview, give an overview of the Return to Instruction Working Group, which is the group I'll be chairing. The best group, of course. But we're, we're really focusing on four different kind of aspects of returning to school in the fall. One is assessing student learning progress. Where are the gaps in learning that we've, you know, that have grown over the course of this remote instruction? Getting some diagnostics together, whether that's formally or informally, through team meetings, for example, just understanding what kids have missed curriculally, and, and where they need to start, starting next year. Second big focus for us is gonna just be augmenting instruction, changing instruction to meet kids where they're at when they come back to school. Part of that, as Dr. Lupini said, is kind of like a postmortem, an autopsy of what's, what's currently working now, and what's not working now, and how we can change that rolling into the fall. Of course, that includes grading and assessment, and it includes accountability for students and for teachers, and includes intervention plans for students receiving Tier 2 and Tier 3 supports. And it requires just kind of an overview of, of maybe a potential of changing what school looks like when we come back to the fall. And that's a really daunting kind of thing to, to understand. Third is structural supports. What do we need to do in terms of our school schedules and our staffing in order to support the plans we're putting in place curriculally? And fourth, and this is a big one, is professional development. Looking at ways that we can help teachers around technology integration, if that's something we, we need to move forward with. And of course, new teacher orientation, new administrator orientation, and mentor, and all that. So those are the kind of four key ideas that we're working on in our committee. I'm sure we're gonna spin out in a lot of details in our conversations. We haven't had a meeting yet, we're gonna meet Thursday. But we're looking forward to the task, and where we've got a great group of people working with us. Thanks. I can entertain questions if we have any.
I have one. Um, you're the greatest group so far, you haven't met.
Well, of course. On paper, we're great.
Okay.
We'll see how that plays out in practice. Dr. Killian?
Thank you very much. So our group did meet this morning, so you know, I, I do have some information to back up what we're doing. So it's the Crisis Response Working Team. And we determine that our, the values under which we will create all of our plans are, first to create a climate of caring. Given this pervasive traumatic event, we need to prioritize staff and create a climate of caring so that staff can come in and work with students. And there's so many different factors that we have to take into consideration. We'll be gathering resources, creating a common language, and creating a system of consistent communication for, for our work as we move forward. But until then, at this time, I wanted to give you an update as far as special education and a couple other things. So, special education directors continue to organize special education team meetings and services, and in that, planning for summer school. So our extended school year program, we have determined, needs to be remote learning for some of the reasons that Dr. Lupini just outlined. We don't have any kind of lifting of restrictions that would ensure a safe environment for, for some of our kids who are, some of them are the most vulnerable students we have. So, we determined a couple weeks ago that remote learning is how we need to plan for our summer school. And then if there are any kinds of exceptions that we can make, we may do that for evaluations, or we may do that for students in a clinical setting. If a student receives speech and language, or PT, or OT in a, in a private clinic, then that's something that we may consider, if that can happen on an individual and safe basis with all the CDC guidelines in place. So that's something that is well underway. Also, last Friday, we held the State McKinney-Vento meeting. It was supposed to be this day-long conference in Meredith, New Hampshire, at church landing, this whole thing with guest speakers from all over the place. So it wasn't that, but we did still hold it. Two hours with, with over 60 homeless liaisons came to, to this session. We covered the McKinney-Vento Law during COVID-19, local challenges for, for assisting and supporting people who are experiencing homelessness, question and answer, and how we can make sure that liaisons are practicing self-care. And the last piece, of course, are, are, all of our staff working in our meal distribution program. So, the food distribution program, pickup and delivery, we're now just starting to plan for summer and to determine if we're going to change the time or the staffing. But it's largely going to look just like it's, it's run, how it's running now. But there are some considerations to, to talk about because we don't have the full-time staff who are, you know, available to sign up. We, we may have to put those positions out there for people to staff the delivery vans and so on. So that's something that's underway now for the summer program. And that is my update, thank you.
Thanks, Carolyn. Any questions for Carolyn? Mr. Farrar?
I have one question. One of the things that I've heard a few times is that the parents have this question on additional structure of, of the learning process. Is there a guideline or something they can actually look at and show what is to be expected?
I'm not sure I understand the question, Mike.
Well, the teachers are out there and they have face-to-face once a week or twice a week with the students and such. Is there an actual guideline that they can look at and say, okay, is my student getting this, is my student getting that?
So, I can say that does vary by, by district, and actually it may vary by teacher, but there are some recommended, and Dr. Hobbs can probably speak to this too, but there are some recommended or suggestions for parents in some of the resources that we have posted. So absolutely, it is something that can help the, the home environment right now for parents to have, have a, have a regular schedule, a regular routine for kids, especially kids who thrive on that and you know, for whom kind of an unpredictable schedule can, can cause some problems and interruptions in learning. But we have a, a document about different parent supports that's posted on our websites. And there are a couple in particular that I would recommend for that, that really outline recommendations for teaching kids during this home learning situation, supporting parents who are, who are partnering with us in learning right now. So I would, I would direct them to, to that resource. There's one out of the, the Iris Center, it's out of Vanderbilt University, that is pretty phenomenal.
Well, one of the things that also came up was that they mentioned they learn structure in school. This is, this is their, their core structured teacher, if you will. And they don't want it to get away from their children, that they need a structure in life, they need a structure in studying. And they were asking me about that, I really didn't have an answer.
So, I, I think part of that answer, Mike, is that, is to, is to go back and remember, and I think this goes along with what David said earlier, to go back and remember that we essentially created this on the fly on March 13th, 16th, and 17th. I remember the work that David did on that remote learning plan and setting out those minimum expectations. An example of what you're saying in another district in the high school, for example, might be, I think if the high school had it to do over now, they would probably have more of a schedule, right, than they, and they do. They, and, and I think that's one of the things you probably see come out of this work that we're gonna do, is that there would be blocks of time for separate, different subject areas, days of the week, for some kind of schedule. But, but remember that that was all being sort of invented on the fly. And so I don't think, I think, I don't think any of us believe that that's exactly where we would want it to be, or that where we would be, where it would be, once we have some more time. or that where we would be, where it would be, once we have some more time to think about what, what went right here and what didn't go as well as we would like. David, do you want to jump in on that?
Definitely. I think you're right on from a teacher accountability, accountability standpoint. We put those expectations into place. Say, look, you've got to do office hours, you know, four hours a day. You got to make sure that you're connecting with kids at least once a week. That's from a teacher accountability standpoint. Our group will, will be having conversations around what, you know, a, a more structured approach, a remote learning 2.0, if you will, would look like, you know, and, and we've got to thread the needle there. We've got to have that balance because we've got families who have, you know, working parents. We've got families who have siblings that are taking care of other siblings that might not have, be able to show up for a lecture given an X, X amount of time. So we've got to come at it with a certain amount of flexibility. But I think undoubtedly we, we all want to see the, the structure put in place where people can, can understand and count on what's expected throughout the course of the week.
And Mike, what's, what's easy to forget in all of this is that the same parents that are saying that to you about their situation, we have teachers in exactly that same situation. They are home. I had a conversation last week with someone who is home with their three kids who are trying to tune into their remote learning while this parent teacher is trying to, you know, provide instruction, office hours for a group of fifth graders. And quite frankly, pulling their hair out in the process. So it's, so we want to make sure we provide some structure, but also that flexibility so that that person can cope.
Well, the funny part is it wasn't a complaint regarding the teacher. I think it was a more of an insecurity on the parent's part. Am I providing enough to my student, to my child? And they're not teachers. So they were sort of wishy-washy as what can I do?
You know, I think the misnomer in all of this is that early on in this, the media took to calling this homeschooling. And it's not. It's, it's at best, I think the right terminology is crisis schooling. Homeschooling is totally wrong. Right? Because that, that, that brings a certain set of expectations to mind for people. And, and it's not that at all. It, it is, it is crisis schooling. And as David said, a large part of this work of his particular subgroup will be to figure out what does 2.0 look like? Because we, we suspect that in one way or another, there's going to be some version of a 2.0 to this, right? And so what does that look like and how do we balance those needs? Caroline said something to us earlier at a meeting today. There was a wellness survey done, and I don't want to talk too much about what our staff members said, except to say that one of the things that we heard from staff in that is their own feeling of sort of inadequacy and I'm not doing enough. Right? Because that's the kind of people they are. That's, that's people that go into teaching and that's, that's their sort of view is that, and they're beating themselves up because this isn't better. Right? Even though they're living with, with whatever they, they're living within their home and their lives and, and whatever at the same, at the same time. And, and we want to make sure that whatever we put in place, we support both, both our parents, our students. We support our parents, our students and those teachers in, in, in the lives that they're trying to live while they're trying to pull all this off from their homes.
Right. I, I, again, I want to repeat that they had, these three parents had unlimited praise for the teachers and the help and stuff. It was more on their end is, am I doing enough?
Yep.
Can I say something? So, um, in the very beginning, I have to say that I was kind of guilty at first to be, you know, a little frustrated and think, oh, wow, this teacher has to give me a little bit more direction. But then as time went on, they did provide a good schedule. And there was a situation where I actually, you can tell when the teacher posted things. And she was literally up at two or three o'clock in the morning posting things. So that kind of puts it in perspective like, oh, wow, this teacher, she has a family of her own and she's literally not sleeping. You know, so I think that, I don't know about the other schools, obviously the other grades, but I just know the elementary school. You know, I have two in the same grade and they have amazing structure. Like they literally give them, yeah, a breakdown of like breaks, lunch, how long to spend on this, the same teacher every day. Both teachers will have for the kids to go on. I think we talked about this in the last school board meeting. But, you know, there's still unfortunately the group of kids that you never see on there. And that might be the parents that are working, you know, so it's hard for them. But, um, yeah, I know, I know what Mike means because it's, you know, I'm, I'm a mom and I'm working at home. But you do start to think, wow, am I like doing this right with them? You don't want your kids to fail. But I did just want to mention that the two teachers in the third grade that work with my children, one of them, she is literally on the computer at two or three o'clock in the morning. And that's amazing because how do you do that? You know? I give them credit. As frustrating as you get in the beginning, you have to kind of think about outside the box.
Yeah. And we worry because that's not, and you know this too, right? That's not sustainable.
No, no. I mean, I don't, you know, I mean, I, I give her credit. I really do. Because she's, in the beginning, I was a little frustrated and now I'm just like, wow, I thank her all the time. So, yeah, they're doing good. I don't know how they're doing it, but they're doing good.
Thanks, Kelly.
You're welcome.
Mr. Farrar?
So as we look forward to next fiscal year, Dr. Lupini and I have, we did set up meetings and we've met with the town administrators in each of our member towns, including Seabrook over the last two weeks. So really we wanted to focus on understanding each of our community's challenges and what lies ahead. Specifically to better understand, you know, any potential revenue collections issues and, and how that affects budgets going forward. So in addition to our intent to better understand their side and, and that revenue collection piece, we also provided them, you know, information that we've shared with you all on our financial outlook, what we're doing to, to save or to, to decrease our costs and any potential funding sources that we're looking to receive from, you know, the CARES Act, FEMA, et cetera. So, you know, speaking of CARES Act, we, we have been notified from the, from the state that Seabrook will, has been allocated $205,000 via that, that revenue source. There is, we are, the, the money is still hung up at the federal level. There, there has, there's a bit of an issue as far as how the Department of Education has defined equitable in, in, in terms of allocating those funds. So when I say $205,000, you know, the, that is not necessarily all coming to Seabrook Public Schools. Depending on how everything shakes up at the, the federal level, there may be a good portion of those funds that go to private schools within our SAU. So that is to be determined. Also, we are looking at FEMA reimbursement. So we've put in an application for that public assistance program. That's, those are funds that will likely be focused more on cleaning and disinfecting, PPE, those types of costs. And that's, that's a longer process where we, we likely will not see those funds until later in next fiscal year. So when, when talking to our town officials, I think a common theme is that there's a great level of uncertainty as to how this crisis will affect our tech tax revenues. You know, they're all looking at analyzing the data. They have a number of factors that they look at, but there really isn't a model in place that can accurately predict how this is going to affect our towns. So they have indicated they'll have a better idea after July 1st when they, which is the due date for collecting property taxes. At which point they'll be able to plan better for the remainder of the year. Another due date, another date, important date that they'll be looking at is December 1st. That's the next property tax due date. And it'll be interesting to see as this crisis progresses, how that there could be a second wave, which will, that could potentially affect that, that due date, that property tax date as well. So we are meeting with, we've, we've set up meetings with all of those town officials to follow up. Some are on a monthly basis. Some will be after that July 1st date. And once we have a better idea from them, we will certainly report back to the, to the school boards on, on that effect. So when we look to next year, we're also looking at ways in which, you know, in investments that we may need to incur. So as part of this return to school task force, we built, did mention that we will be collecting, or we will be putting together estimates on costs across all of these five working groups. Because there will certainly be investment needed as part of this new, whatever the, the, this, this looks like. So I will be working with the operations group and we'll be providing recommendations for transportation, food service facilities, athletics. I'll also note that Jason Saltmarsh is chairing the technology group. And Donna Couture, I'm sorry, and Jason is our technology director at the, at Winnicott. And Donna Couture, who is our ELO director, will be chairing the post-secondary response group. I will certainly not say that operations is the best group. But Jason and Donna may have something to say about that. So meanwhile, I will say that, you know, we are working, the SAU is working with each of our individual schools to take, to relook at our budget assumptions. You know, as we look at potential investment due to COVID-19, we need to look at where we could potentially have to reduce costs. So we're, we're taking a hard look at any new hires, whether we need, do need to make replacements, whether we're, we're creating priorities as far as our, any budgetary items for next year. Just so that we'll have those levers in case, in case that is necessary. Finally, I do want to, to thank the Seabrook School Board, you know, for their support of the food service program over the summer. You know, the, as well as our team. So I mean, Dr. Eric Halian, our school nutrition direct managers, which includes Abigail Kaplan here at Seabrook, as well as all the, the school nutrition workers, our social workers and educational associates and, and, and our community at large. Because we've really seen an incredible outpouring of support from the community as far as fundraising goes for this food service program. They're, they've raised over $10,000 to continue the food service program into the summer, which is incredibly important because we are currently serving over 300 students per day, seven days a week. And we expect those numbers to only increase as we, as this crisis extends through the summer. So it's, this is, this is an important, it's important that we address food insecurity for our families. But I also want to reiterate that this program is for all students and all families regardless of financial need. You know, we have, we have many families that, you know, we, we, we just talked about the struggles of teachers and, and, and parents working with their students on their education at home. Well, you know, this is for, for, for all of those parents and families as well. They're, you know, they're constantly preparing meals, you know, if, in many cases, working from home remotely and, and helping their, their children with their schooling. So, you know, this is also for them to, to, to help alleviate that stress as well. So be happy to answer any, any questions about these myriad of topics.
Thanks, Matt. Erin or Stephanie, who wants to go first?
I'm going to find the mute button. I'm not used to going first. Stephanie's throwing me off. Yeah, but there's not a lot of change. We've continued to work hard at just keeping kids engaged. You know, I think people have mentioned this already. Our teachers are doing an amazing job of just working hard and trying to find ways to help the kids be successful while not feeling stressed out and recognizing that families are feeling overwhelmed and stressed out and trying to make it as simple as they can, but also help kids learn. So I can't say enough for the staff and, and how much they've been doing. And they're all certainly exhausted. You know, I think Kelly, you're right on with that 2:00, 3:00 AM on the computer because it's real and that's happening. At the same time, we're also recognizing that we've got students who are on their computers doing their assignments at 2:00, 3:00 AM. So they've been working on their schedule and trying to balance. A teenager's schedule was a little bit opposite of maybe an elementary student's or even an adult's. So just trying to find times that the students can access them and they've really done a great job and been successful. So working, working down the home stretch and continuing to work hard. So again, I'm just really proud of all of the staff and how much they've stepped in to help out. Just to echo, thank you to the food service and maintenance facilities, all the people who are still working and helping to keep the school going while empty. But still there's things to be done and then the helping families access food has been huge. So a big thank you to that. Thank you to the SAU staff for all of their support and hard work during all of this. It's hard to believe how fast it's gone, but it certainly has been a whirlwind. We are working on our end of the year plans. We are working hard at trying to find special celebrations for our eighth graders while some of it being remote. I did send out the save the date for June 8th. We don't have the exact time yet, but we will be doing a celebration for our eighth graders for their graduation. It will be in cars, so kind of a parade style. We've got a lot of gifts for them and some recognitions. We'll plan to do a regular graduation program because there are still some awards and recognitions for some of our students that we want to make sure people can see. And we will, we're working on the details for finding a way for just a graduate and family to get out just for a quick picture in front of the school if they'd like to do that. But that will be kind of the extent of it. We'll have the eighth grade team there socially distant from each other just to wave as the cars go by. But that's the, the plan for right now. And, and as we have more details, we'll certainly make sure that you get those as well. Also working on recognizing our retirees and doing a couple of different things so that they can be recognized. We've got some staff in the whole district that have put in a lot of years in Seabrook. So we want to make sure that those things are special for them. And then just figuring out the best way to, to wrap up the school year, to make sure that Chromebooks can come back and that students who had items in lockers can get those. So we're working hard on those plans and, and we'll again, get those things out as soon as we have a firm-up plan. Keeping in mind that we want to be safe and it will be probably similar to what we did with the Chromebook pickup, which actually went pretty well where people can just stay right in their cars or close to their cars, but be able to drop off the Chromebook and pick up the items that they had in school before they break for summer. And then also teachers needing to get back into the classroom to wrap up, clean up, take care of things that, that hadn't been taken care of on Friday, the 13th, before we knew we weren't returning to school. So that is where we're at at the middle school.
And we're going to always be a little extra leery of Friday, the 13th going forward. Thanks, Erin. You know, I echo her praise for our district-wide staff. I mean, our tech guys, you know, they get emails and, you know, troubleshooting stuff. Yep, I'll meet them at the school and switch out a device and they're ready at a moment's notice. And the custodians have been great, the food service, so many people pitching in to help out in the food service and the, and the busing. The school social worker trying to troubleshoot and get people resources. And just all the staff have been making phone calls to check in on families and making personal connections with students. Just the entire staff has been amazing. Couldn't ask for a better staff. In terms of kind of updates, we had our preschool and kindergarten information nights virtual. And we had pretty good attendance on that. We did record it so that we could have people. And we had um, pretty good attendance on that. We did record it so that we could have people view that at a later date as well and have had people definitely accessing that. And what we did was a um, interest survey so that people are filling that out so we can capture their basic information and follow up with them for the actual registration. So trying to get a sense of the numbers and um, usually it's kind of challenging because usually we have kids come in and do kind of a screening to see um, what some of their needs might be and best prepare for the fall. And we won't be able to do that um, at this time, looking to hopefully do that in the fall. But we're just trying to do whatever we can in a virtual mode instead. We are also in the midst of, you know, planning um, for the fourth to fifth grade transition. And um, we have that information night like um, Aaron already mentioned and trying to figure out how do we kind of hang on, how do we reunite and do something with the fourth grade students when we do get back in session? We're fortunate that they're, you know, leaving our school, but they're just down the hall. So I'm trying to see, you know, when we do get back in session, how we can kind of reunite and do something with them. We also have, um, you know, the challenge is, we kind of talked about it in terms of engaging families and everybody balancing everything. I mean, I can't tell you how many staff members I'll be talking to and one's like, oh my gosh, my, my daughter just put popcorn in the soup. Like it's everybody trying to multitask and run around and get things done. Up all night doing stuff and trying to make sure that people are balancing things and seeing what we can take off of each other's plates. And um, at the same time, really trying to not overwhelm parents, um, but trying to get students engaged. Honestly, this week, we've been spending time talking about summer school. We usually have a program for um, the mornings in July. And we're really debating even trying to do that remotely because we feel like we'd face the same challenges, those that typically would, we would try to target to participate or having a half-time participating right now. And um, you know, people have had a lot of screen time and all that. So we're looking at maybe moving to just a sending packets home for every student so that they can access that and kind of do it on their own schedule because we realize it's been tough to get people on the same schedule during this time. And we're continuing to kind of offer online resources and parent forums. So we had a parent forum. We had sent out the survey, like I mentioned last time, seeing what people were interested in. We had a parent forum this past Friday. And we're gonna continue doing those and recording them so that parents can view those at a later date, just with resources. Right now, we're still kind of helping people troubleshoot the educating at home, but we plan on doing some that are helping to transition students back. So as we develop plans and figure out what we're doing moving forward, helping families get through that. Because joking in our school, it's gonna be a tough transition back for everybody. I've been saying even cats and dogs. It's like, everybody's just uh, you know, gonna have to make some adjustments. And we realized that we're trying to look at the resources from CARES and, and other federal funds that they've extended time on to see what can we do to really help with the students coming back. So I think the SAU team um, has been amazing in terms of planning things out, being one step ahead and you know, keeping all the plates spinning. So planning for the fall while we're looking at the summer, we're looking at the closure of the school. And uh, really appreciate all their support and guidance.
Thanks, Stephanie. Any questions on any of that?
Good. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mike.
Moving on, uh, for new business, let's go to donations.
So this is an informational item. Is this yours, Aaron?
Yes, there's a donation, um, was the eighth grade fundraiser. Um, and that was a dining for dollars type night. That was the, the donation, the money from that night.
No, no action required, just an informational item, Mike.
Right. It's great. $287. It's a good deal. Thank you very much. The next one is the federal grant general assurances.
Matt, do you want to handle this or do you want me to?
Sure, I can handle it. So um, we are required um, as a school district or SAU to um, to ensure um, through our federal I'm sorry, I'm getting some background noise here. We're required to ensure that we are following all financial protocol and controls. Um, and we certify that via superintendent's signature as well as the school board chair signature and notifying the school board of these assurances. Um, all of those proper protocol and controls are included in our policies. Um, and we are, um, and this is, so we are formally notifying you of these assurances and we will ask Mr. Rabado to sign off on these assurances.
And no action required here?
No action.
Okay, moving along, um, the federal phys, federal physical monitoring.
Yes, so um, as part of our um, federal grants, receiving federal grants, we are periodically audited by the state. So the, the state department of education did come, um, well, they didn't come in person because it was um, during the closure, but, but they did review all of our paperwork. We had no findings with the exception of one, which was our policies. So our policies, as you are aware, are out of date. Um, and they're in the process of being updated through our policy committee. Um, so we um, we, we have notified the state that we are doing so and um, that will effectively correct the issue. There's no action required from the board. We're just notifying you that, um, that this did occur.
I was reading through the uh, the policy exceptions. We still have a long ways to go on those policies, obviously.
We have a ways to go.
Yeah, although I will note that, that, so there was a number of policies that they cited, but um, I think all of them roll up to a single policy that we will be bringing to the policy committee, I believe in the next policy committee meeting, hopefully. It's just a lengthy 30-page policy. So
Great.
Should be fun for that committee.
Matt, you're coming to that policy meeting, right?
Oh, I think, I think I have other plans.
Oh.
Oh, we're working around your schedule.
He's gonna read it verbatim.
That would be great.
Have any questions besides that? All right, let's move on to the uh, lunch price recommendations.
Yeah, so um, on an annual basis, um, we come to the school board to recommend our lunch and breakfast pricing um, for approval for the next fiscal year, so the next school year of 2020, 2021. What we try to do is um, typically um, stay in line with USDA recommendations. So the USDA, um, Seabrook is a little bit um, lower than USDA guidelines, which is $3.09 per meal. So um, what we're trying to do at Seabrook is to slowly narrow that gap. What, what the, the Department of Agriculture really does not want is for us to be making money off of their free and reduced um, reimbursement. So essentially, um, they could, they could be reimbursing us more than what our, you know, our costs are. And that, and that goes in line with what we charge our students as well who are paying. So um, we are recommending a 15 cents increase for lunch and breakfast. That would bring our lunch price up to $2.15 and our breakfast price up to $1.15.
I have a quick question. Are we chasing, are we chasing the federal uh, amounts as the years go by? In other words, they're going up and we're going up?
Yes, um, so um, we, we are hoping to narrow that gap, but um, I don't, the, the intent is not to get to the USDA price. It's just to narrow it incrementally. Um, we are we, when we look at our pricing, it's SAU-wide. So it's not just Seabrook. It's the, it's the pricing for Seabrook, Hampton Falls, Northampton, Southampton, and Winnicott. So for example, Hampton Falls and Northampton, um, next year, they'll be, their meals will be $3.10 and $1.65. Um, Winnicott will be $3.40 and um, two, I believe it's two 10, um, don't quote me on that. Um, so it's the average of all the districts. And we, we just need to be cognizant of um, you know, what's best for our individual districts as opposed to the SAU as a whole. So
Any questions? Right, um, I guess we can move on. Reimbursement procedures?
Well, you'd need a, in order to act on this one, this is an action item. You would need a, you would need a motion and a second and a vote.
Can I have a motion to um, increase the pricing for the lunches and breakfasts to 215 and 115 respectively?
I'll second that.
Who was, who was first?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, all right. I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Rhonda, please take a roll call.
Mike Rabado?
Yes.
Forrest Carter?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
And Kelly Huber?
Yes.
Thank you. I have the vote recorded.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to course reimbursement procedures.
Yeah, so currently, um, Seabrook is the only district um, within the SAU that allows for the ability um, of our non-union or for anyone to do prepayment of course tuition. You know, when we were, uh, this most recent audit from this past year, as you recall, they recommended some changes to our course reimbursement procedures. Um, and one of that, one of those changes includes um, reimbursing our course tuition through payroll. So we have, we are, we have implemented that change. It will be paid out through um, payroll going forward as opposed to accounts payable. And we also, so as such, we, we, we need to eliminate the practice of prepaying for course tuition. So we are recommending that the board approve elimination of the course tuition prepayment option.
Great. Any comments regarding that? I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve uh, the changes to the reimbursement for course, courses. Rhonda, would you please take a roll call?
Mike Rabado?
Yes.
Forrest Carter? Forrest Carter? You guys gotta remember that we have to unmute. We gotta do a verbal.
Yes.
Okay. Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
He's far out in the woods, Rhonda, so it's kind of hard, you know.
I gotta yell really loud.
Yeah.
And Kelly Huber?
Yes. I was thinking the same thing.
I have the vote recorded.
Thank you.
It's kind of funny. You can't see the forest through the trees. I'm just saying.
All right, the next one is the withdrawal from building maintenance expendable trust. We, um, let's see. Matt has outlined what is part of this. And we're expecting to withdraw $64,752 from the building maintenance expendable trust. And that's for the replacement of the lockers and additional building maintenance and repairs. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Can you second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to uh, do this withdrawal. Please take a roll call.
Mike Rabado?
Yes.
Forrest Carter?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
And Kelly Huber?
Yes.
Okay.
I have the vote recorded.
Thank you. Moving on, a word of bid for the Chromebooks uh, for Seabrook. And this is Matt, right?
Yes, so the uh, the bid process has concluded for our proposed Chromebook purchase. And this was a cooperative bid process, um, we're working with Winnicott to, to achieve a, a better qual, quantity of scale and better pricing. Bids were sent out to eight vendors and three submitted bids. As such, the administration is recommending a ward of bid to Access Business Solutions in the amount of $18,540. I'll also note that we, the budgeted amount for this purchase was $20,880.
Okay, I have one, one question on this. I'm reading it. Um, Access is the only one that, that did not include the one-year warranty in their bid. That $22.20 is for all purchases?
No, that's, that's per
Per device.
Per device. You know, it's, it's really just how they structured it. So I mean, you see their cost per, you can just effectively put that into the 211 to, to compare it a little bit more accurately. It's just how they structured it.
Okay, great. I'll take a motion to accept this and award this bid in the amount of $18,540 to Access Business Solution for the Chromebook purchase. Motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Thank you. Second, anyone?
I'll second that.
Beat you to it.
You can have it.
To award this, uh, please take a roll call.
Mike Rabado?
Yes.
Forrest Carter?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
And Kelly Huber?
Yes.
I have the vote recorded.
You. Moving on to the national, natural gas generator.
Yeah, so the bid process has also concluded for the proposed natural gas generator replacement purchase. When I say replacements, um, we don't currently have a natural gas generator. It's a traditional fuel generator. Bids were sent directly to seven vendors, um, three attended the walkthrough and all those, all three submitted bids. As such, we are recommending a ward of bid to Moral Electric in the amount of $31,500. Funding for this purchase will be from the 2020, 2021 warrant article that was approved at ballot. Um, I will note that that, um, that warrant article was for $30,000. Um, so this is slightly over budget. However, we, we have recognized savings in some, with some of our other bids. Additionally, um, we will be receiving $1,500. Which is actually perfect in this situation. So it brings it right in on budget for, um, for the existing, for the removal of the existing. for, for the existing, for the removal of the existing generator. So we're, we're, we're receiving the revenue for that, for the old generator, essentially parts.
Great. Any questions? I'll accept a motion to approve award to Moral Electric in an amount of $31,500. And this will come from a 2020-21 warrant article for 30,000 and also additional funding from the operating budget in the amount of $1,500. Have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, yes.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. No further discussions. Please take a roll call.
Mike Rabado.
Yes.
Forrest Carter.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
And Kelly Huber.
Yes.
Thank you. I have the vote recorded.
Thank you very much. And for the next one is replacement computers. Matt?
Yeah, so our final bid process has concluded for the proposed replacement computer purchase. Bids were sent to eight vendors and all eight submitted bids. I will note that one of the bids was disqualified for not meeting the RFP specifications. However, we are recommending a ward of bid to Staples in the amount of $21,299.55. Funding from this, for this purchase is from the 2020, 2021 operating budget. We had budgeted $19,500. So this is also slightly over.
Where is the additional funding coming from for the overage?
So the Chromebooks came in a few thousand dollars under. And then we have, you know, what, we, we have other funds available within the technology account that we're going to have to. If, if needed, we can, we'll have to reduce costs there.
Great. Thank you. All right, I'll take a motion to award the bid for computers to Staples in the amount of $21,299.55. Have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you. And a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. A motion and a second. For Jen and Kelly, please take a roll call.
I'm sorry, just a moment. 292.
You can wait.
Okay, Mike Rabado.
Yes.
Forrest Carter.
Forrest.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
Kelly Huber.
Yes.
I have the vote recorded.
Thank you. Nominations.
So we're gonna do, we're gonna get to that in non-public.
Got it.
So can I, I just go through the dates first, then you can, they can do the non-public. So just a reminder on some dates and this, this calendar is a little different than some of the others. So we have an OC meeting tomorrow night. And I believe Mr. Carter, you're going to represent Seabrook at that meeting, I believe.
You got it.
Okay. And then we have a joint board update on May 19th. We have the joint board meeting on May 26th and then your board meets again on June the 9th.
Okay. I got a question. If Forrest goes, that means I don't have to go?
That is not true. You are representing the Winnicott Board, as I understand.
Okay. Right. All right, I need a motion to go to non-public under RISA 91-A colon 32A-E.
It's B, actually.
B. Oh, I see. I'm sorry, B, yes.
That's okay.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Okay, roll call. Mike Rabado.
Yes.
Forrest Carter.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
Kelly Huber.
Yes.
Okay, so bear with me a moment while we set this up. I'm going to pause the recording. We have resumed the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, our first recommendation. I'll make the motion to recommend Hannah Stone as the seventh grade math teacher and as recommended by the superintendent and his staff.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Please take a roll call.
Mike Rabado.
Yes.
Forrest Carter.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
And Kelly Huber.
Yes.
Okay, I have the vote recorded.
Thank you. All right, for a second nomination, Bill led this charge as far as pronunciation, so we'll see how it works. Lisa Villmarie, for school psychologists. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
I liked your pronunciation better than mine, Mike. Thank you.
I'm on the French Canadian side.
I'm gonna have to bring her into the meeting to have her tell us how to pronounce it.
I was gonna ask when she popped up earlier. Please take a roll call.
Mike Rabado.
Yes.
Forrest Carter.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
And Kelly Huber.
Yes.
I have the vote recorded.
Yay, Lisa.
Right. Good deal. I guess unless we have anything else, I'll take a motion to retire. Yes.
Retire?
Do adjourn. I don't care.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. I need a second. We're out of here.
I'll second that motion.
Super.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that unanimous?
Thank you, everyone.
Erin, I heard, I saw that Hannah left. Do you want to get, will you get the hold of her?
Yes, I can send her an email right now.
I'm gonna ask Lisa.
There we are.
She's there.
Yes.
Just gonna ask if you can tell us how to pronounce your last name.
It's Villa Mare.
Thank you.
Bill nailed it. Congratulations, Lisa.
Call me Miss V, everyone else is.
Bill gets a 10 bucks.
Nice. Welcome aboard, Lisa. Great to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, good night, everybody.
Night.
Bye, everyone. Bye, you have a good one.